Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome, everybody. We have a couple more chairs up here in the front if you'd like. We appreciate the turnout once again. We're here for our Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular meeting, county commissioners, meeting of the Natrona County Board of County Commissioners. Meeting's called to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Frill.
Here.
Commissioner Laird.
Present.
Commissioner Milne.
On the phone.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Nickleason.
Here. Let's stand for the pledge. Our first item is the approval of the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I would entertain a motion for approval, since you didn't say approval. So is that a motion for approval?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Laird and seconded by Commissioner Frill to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda items have been approved. We have next, under contracts, agreements, or resolutions, consideration of approval of the MRG request. This has not been noticed as a public hearing, but we did pull it from our consent agenda so that we could have the commissioners comment or have the opportunity to comment. Any commissioners wish to speak on the consideration of the approval of the MRG request?
I think you need a motion first. First.
Oh, thank you for the point of order. I appreciate that. I would entertain a motion with respect to the approval of the MRG request.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the MRG request.
It's been moved by Commissioner Frill. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Laird.
For purposes of discussion.
Then Commissioner Laird, do you get to go first?
The MRG request, ladies and gentlemen, as to whether we continue to fund SkyWest Airlines taking you out of here to Salt Lake City and then making your connections from Salt Lake City on Delta. And if we don't subsidize them, they've told us they can't afford to run an airline here and that they would probably have to leave the community. So we've had a lot of discussion on this for quite some time about the necessity to continue subsidizing them. And let me tell you how that occurs. The Wyoming Legislature passed a statute some time ago that is shortening up calling it the Wyoming Arrow, not exact. That's not exactly what it is, but it has to do with aeronautics. And that is that they have authorized and given us the legal authority to subsidize airlines in our community, in every community in the state, and that the state will pay for part of that. In this case, what we're being assessed, the state pays forty percent of. And so we pay the rest. However, we, I, I'm going to speak for me. I think the city government ought to pay. If the state pays forty percent, there's sixty percent left. I would like to see the city pay thirty percent and the county pay thirty percent because we're all, we're all Casper and Natrona County residents. And a lot of our people use that airline for business purposes. It's said that the airline brings in quite a bit of money into the city, which the county doesn't get really, I don't think, much of a cut out of that. The city may. I'm not sure exactly of the breakdown on on that, but sales taxes and what have you that the city, that the city makes from people who come in here and make purchases is involved. And so the issue for me now is if the city will contribute or any other cities, because there are people from other counties who use these airlines. But if we lose an airline, they're gone. You can't get them back. So I, I've been, I've been against, I voted against this a couple times, and I changed my mind after I talked to the, our airport board, who I respect the people on the airport board, Steve Emery being one of them, who I thought gave us some pretty good information. And Mr. Januska, who is here and who is the airport manager. I don't know if you know him. I don't know. Mr. Januska, could you stand up so you could introduce yourself? Oh, he's standing up back in the back with his hand up. And he's, he's an expert in these matters and he can, he knows exactly why we need to keep this airline going and what everyone's liability is to pay for that. It's, what I will tell you, ladies and gentlemen, is we have the money to afford it right now. It isn't like we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. I really don't want to do this for very much longer. But I would, I, there's only two communities in the state, I think, that has two airlines, and that's Teton County and Natrona County. But you lose an airline and you know what happened when Allegiant left. I really liked that to go down to Phoenix. I really liked Allegiant to go down to Las Vegas. It was really nice. But they couldn't make any money. And that may have been before the Aeronautics Act was passed. But the state legislators and the state government authorized this to be done. So the former commissioners instituted it from before I was elected or the rest of us were elected, I think. And it's been carried on since that period of time. And you may have questions about it. Mr. Januska's here. I don't know what the chairman thinks about him answering any questions, but he's pretty good at it because he's really right on the money with understanding it. He's been in, he's been your, you're running your airport for how many years? Seventeen years. He's, so he's, you know, he's, he really understands that they're, they're trying to bring in a big airshow here from Reno. I don't know if we have the word on that. Mr. Nicolason is also the liaison to the airport board and he knows as much about it as any of the commissioners, maybe more. So I know that most of you are here for a different subject. And we'll get to that, I, I guess, with respect to the, the, what is it, a gravel pit or something like that that they put, they want to put in your backyard? Can't imagine you would, you would mind that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I've said enough about the MRG.
Thank you, Commissioner Laird. Commissioner Frill?
Yeah, just a few things that I wanted to hit on it. You know, it's not that the city doesn't want to be involved. The city is actually in discussions right now of be, becoming part of this MRG. So that they just haven't gotten through their process yet, and we're coming up on budget sessions anyway, so that's when that's all going to come forward. You know, other things that they're working on, you know, nobody likes the MRG, but I agree. You know, if we end up losing one of these airlines, we're not going to get it back. And people complain about, you know, the fact that we got to pay them, but at the same time, if I've listened to people complaining about United Airlines and missing flights or being stuck in Denver or just not being on time, delayed, whatever it might be. So you're going to have just as many problems with other airlines as you are, you know, in, in paying this. The, there are things that I know that Glenn and, and Fly Casper are looking at as far as it's not necessarily the amount of people that you have in seats on a plane. It's also cargo that can be put on planes and flown out of here that's going to lower that down or lower the cost down. We're getting into that time of the year. We listened to Visit Casper today and Advance Casper. We're getting into that time of year where tourism's coming back and, and we're going to have a lot more people coming in and out of here, which is going to increase the ridership on those planes. It's going to decrease the amount of money that is used on this MRG. And as far as the, the county being the one to foot the bill, yeah, we are, but we're footing sixty percent of that bill. The other forty percent is coming from the state of Wyoming. So if the state of Wyoming thinks it's important for them to put forty percent of the money into keeping this airline here, then we probably ought to listen to that. There's a reason that it's here and there's, there's a lot of things that'll happen if we end up losing it. So I'm in favor, at least this go around of continuing this so that we can at least see where the city ends up and how some of these other groups end up shaking out. Some businesses in town getting together, putting some money up. I, I'd just like to see where we end up.
Thank you, Commissioner Frill. Commissioner North?
I'm not going to disagree that it's nice to have two airlines in here. However, I will disagree with the fact that it's going to cost the county one point three million dollars for the next year to have that airplane in here. Not the entire cost. That's just the county's share, the sixty percent that the county has to come up with. I can think, I've got a whole list of things where we're wondering where we're going to come up with the money for to fix things. One of them is the restrooms at the fairgrounds. Everybody knows that the stadium restrooms need to be fixed. We can only do part of it this year. That's part of the problem. We don't, we aren't really flush with money. Yeah, we can pay our bills, but to me, this MRG from SkyWest for one flight in and one flight out a day is basically extortion, in my opinion. And I'm not putting any blame on Glenn. I'm not playing, putting any blame on anybody else. Some of these things are beyond our control. Some of these things are what SkyWest is doing. And so don't misunderstand what I'm saying, but I just don't think that this is something that's good for the county. I think that we can utilize that money, and I don't know about you guys, but I can think of a lot of things that I'd rather our taxpayer dollars go toward instead of supporting SkyWest and Delta on this particular flight. And I'm not saying that that flight's not a valuable asset to our community. So don't misunderstand me on that, but it's not, it's not something that's sustainable. Every year, these prices go up. I mean, just for the first two quarters, we're looking at almost six hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, just the county's share. I don't feel like that's reasonable for us to have to pay. And, you know, and I was, I was on the board the first time they came to us and they requested it. That first time was only four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars and it lasted over nine months. This time, every time that we approve something, it gets spent. Every bit of it gets spent. So the cost keeps going up. They keep raising the rates. It's not sustainable. At some point in time, we're going to have to cut the cord. And as far as I'm concerned, I'd rather, I'd rather cut our losses now and work on getting a different airline in here. So we do have more than one airline, and that's my feeling on. So I can't support this. I haven't supported it since the first time because I don't like being extorted. I don't like companies coming to us saying, if you don't do this, we're not going to, we're going to pull out. You know, sometimes it's better just to, to take your losses and, and leave and take your lumps and move forward. And that's the way I feel about this. So I can't support continually to pay that much money for one flight in and out a day.
Thank you, Commissioner North. Commissioner Milne.
Yeah, Peters, Mr. Chairman, please stop me. If you can't hear me, I appreciate the time and to be able to speak on this myself. I agree with Dave to a point that yes, this has increased dramatically for the cost. And, and for some of these partners that we've tried to or have worked with, we just haven't seen the, the full commitment yet. And I understand some of that, but it does, and I under, I heard and understand what Commissioner Frill is saying. But overall, it seems that the partners that we expected to have on this have not come to fruition. I disagree with Commissioner North, however, that we need to, we should stop this now. I believe we're getting very close to that point if we don't have more assistance. But we have potential for races coming in, for the air races. We have other projects such as a shooting complex coming in that, you know, if, if we keep backing out, if we aren't showing our support for the infrastructure to get people in and out of our town, out of our county. Those businesses that want to move to Casper, that want to move to Natrona, those projects that are out there that, that we're competing with other communities for, they'd be sure happy to go somewhere else eventually. If we aren't stepping up and trying to say, yes, we're here and we, we're trying to improve, we're here to support and work with you all, if they don't see, see that type of commitment on our side, it's, it, it makes that argument, why to come Casper, why come to Natrona County, a whole lot harder. Bringing in another airline, that would be great. But until we have something ready to go, why would we cut off that alternate airline? When we don't have something in place or at least ready to step in, we don't have that commitment from anybody else. So I'm, I'm once again reluctantly, very reluctantly going to have to support this MRG.
Thank you, Commissioner Milne. A couple, a couple facts. We're being asked to approve a quarter one and quarter two, two thousand and twenty-four MRG request. So we're almost through quarter one. SkyWest has been patient. The airport, I think, has been patient, but SkyWest is telling us they really can't wait any longer for us to make a decision. We have this MRG request of six hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars would be the county's sixty percent share. The state today agreed to pay its forty percent share of four hundred and thirty-three thousand. So again, this is for a six-month period. And it's a not to exceed number, and we have had times where it has been less than that, the amount authorized by the county. So we can be hopeful that passenger traffic, traffic will increase. And we were told today in our work session that that typically is a trend during kind of the spring break period and, and into the summer, late spring travel period. So I'm hopeful that it'll be less than six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for these six months. But, you know, I, I will expect that, you know, it might come in at that level. But I wanted to say that SkyWest operates both the United Flight and the Delta Flight, and a lot of people don't know that. And they operate through those two carriers. SkyWest operates through the two carriers on two fundamentally different contractual structures. United has decided that they want to fly to Casper. And so they contract a specific rate with SkyWest and, and SkyWest has no risk, they call it. At the same time, or conversely, Delta has maybe less interest, or at least they don't want to have the same arrangement. So SkyWest's arrangement with Delta is an at-risk. And that is a really odd and I, to me, unique structure because Delta sets, Delta corporate sets the ticket price. SkyWest has to suffer through that. And, and we all pay more, I think, we all pay more for the Delta flight than we do for a United flight, and I hate that. My, my feeling is that if we were to, and, and SkyWest tells us, they, they had a representative come in, in front of us, I think, at the beginning of February. Their representative told us that only, I think, fifteen percent of their business, and they are, what, the fifth biggest carrier in the United States? I mean, it's, they are big. They only have about fifteen percent of their business as an, on an at-risk basis. And, and I think that if they could enter into a different agreement with Delta, so it's more of a contracted rate like they have with United, they'd love to do that. But basically, the carrier, Delta says, yeah, we'll fly, but it's at your risk. And so here we are, and SkyWest's in a bad position. And this county's in a bad position, but I, I, I think this county is unique and remarkable and special, and I think it's the best county in the state. And I think things like this make it so. Things like this make traffic to Casper and to this county at just a different level than you see anywhere else in the state, other than the big fancy private jets that fly into Teton County, and nobody wants to be like that. That's off the record. But, but I think that sometimes we have to pay, pay it forward. A, a, a great man said that, and, and I believe that. And I think this is one of those times where I don't think it's fair. I think that the city, I agree with Commissioner Laird. I think the city should pay half of this sixty percent cost. But the city isn't going to make a decision on that right now, and, and we have to make a decision on it right now. So if we lose SkyWest and the Delta flight at this point, I think it's going to be way more difficult to bring in another carrier. And I know that the airport board and Glenn in particular spend a lot of time every month trying to recruit new carriers, and Glenn has talked to us about that before. They are trying. But remember, even if they got a second, another carrier in, they might say, well, we need some money too. Okay? So, you know, I, I think we have to just understand that we don't know that that would, would look better than, than what we're faced with now. I think that I have to support this, but I think that, I, I don't see myself supporting this next time. And I think that we are in a place where we need to keep our momentum going with some of these events, whether it's the Reno Air Race, whether it's the shooting range, the, the shooting complex. We've, we've got a number of things, the sports ranch, we've got a number of things going for us, and I think right now to pull out on this would be a bad thing for our community and one that we couldn't recover from for, for some time. So with, again, without support from the city and others, it's going to be really hard for me to support this in the future, but tonight I'm going to support it. Any other comment? Then I would say or a call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the MRG request, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
That carries. The next item will be the public hearing for the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-one ICC codes. Do we have a staff report?
Mr. Chair, commissioners, before you, our resolutions to adopt the two thousand and twenty-one International Building Code, Residential Code, the existing building code, the fire code, plumbing code, fuel gas code, mechanical code, and the two thousand and twenty-three National Electrical Code and the Electrical Safety Code.
Counsel? I apologize. I think for our record, I have to actually open the public hearing on this. So if you'll bear with me. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-one ICC codes. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules in the Natrona County Commission, and other applicable laws. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That would be all of the codes that we're proposing to adopt. And then lastly would be the establishment of and the rules of practice for the Natrona County Development Board of Appeals. Starting with that one, commissioners, the, obviously, the Board of Appeals has already been adopted. In going back through their rules of practice, we did just make some somewhat minor changes for that, just clarifying some of the process and the difference between the Board of Appeals and Board of County Commissioners. As far as the building codes go, the, the rest of the codes, we, as a county, have been out of compliance with the state for a period of time. Unfortunately, the state fire marshal has graciously been willing to work with us in getting these codes updated. Back last fall, I believe, late August, early September, the Board of Appeals got together on a weekly basis for a couple of months to review all of the codes for the two thousand and twenty-one codes to see if there were any changes we wanted to have as a county or just adopt the code straight out. These resolutions do include some changes. Those were, the Board of Appeals did go through in heavy detail and great discussion in what they thought would be appropriate, what wouldn't be appropriate, and what would meet, what would meet the needed standards. At this time, in order to obtain our, retain our home rule, we do need to adopt these codes. Unfortunately, we're at the two thousand and twenty-one codes and we're now in two thousand and twenty-four, and I don't believe that it will be too long before we're back before you asking to adopt the two thousand and twenty-four codes. So this does need to happen. As far as I'm aware, there was no feedback really that was given to the building department as far as what, for the adoption of these codes, again, we are still a little, little behind on the codes. But we would ask that you adopt those codes, and if you have any technical questions about the codes themselves, I would refer you to our building official.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner North?
Jared, just to be, so that everybody understands, we have to adopt these codes so that we actually have home rule. If we don't, then the state takes over and they can tell us what to do, and we don't have that control, our local control. So that's part of the reason why you have to adopt these codes according to state statute.
That is correct, Commissioner North.
Thank you.
Commissioner Frill?
Mr. Chair, the, I guess a question for you, Pat, is, once these are adopted now, do you know how far, how, how long until we need to do this again to, to stay in compliance?
We would be okay until at least January first of twenty-five.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Thank you. Then we will open it up for public comment. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of adoption of the two thousand and twenty-one ICC codes to please approach the lectern. Second call for individuals wishing to speak in favor of the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-one ICC codes, please approach. Third call, any individuals who wish to speak in favor of the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-one ICC codes, please approach. There being none, at this time, I'd ask individuals who wish to speak in opposition of the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-one ICC codes, please approach.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'd like to clarify at least
Would you state your name?
Jason Gutierrez, ninety-three fifty Lochner Road, Natrona County. The state requires that we adopt five of these nine proposed codes. That means there's four codes here that we are adopting at our own accord. We are putting that on the Natrona County residents that we are not required to do so. We are, we, we would be one of four counties in Wyoming that does that to their Natrona County, to their residents. The rest of the state does not adopt those optional codes. They'll adopt the state required codes, which are the International Building Code, the existing
They'll adopt the state-required codes, which are the International Building Code, the Existing Building Code, the Fire Code, the Fuel Gas Code, and the Electric Code. Uh all the rest of these uh uh codes are optional. And again, uh if we think about
Can you say those one more time?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, I may be going a little fast. The International Building Code, the Existing Building Code, the Fire Code, the Fuel Gas Code, and then National Electric Code. Those are the minimum codes that the state says if you want home rule, these are the codes you need to adopt. We elect to go above and beyond that on these, and I would be at opposition of uh imposing those extra codes on our Natrona County residents.
And what are those four that uh in your opinion are elective?
Uh the International Residential Code, the International Mechanical Code, the International Plumbing Code, and the National Electrical Safety Code. So those are uh above and beyond, and remember, we're talking about Natrona County residents. If we think about Natrona County, the bulk of our population uh resides in either the city of Casper and the other municipalities. Um so it's entirely appropriate for the maybe those other codes to be imposed there, but not on our rural Natrona County residents. And some other counties in the state uh will um have some variation of that. Campbell County is a great example. Uh they they require these codes in uh subdivisions only. But if you're in an unplatted area, you're not required to do that, or it's optional. Uh many of these counties look at the Building Department as a resource where people can willingly come and look for advice rather than an enforcement agency. And I think we are flirting with that enforcement agency rather than a resource. Um moving on down through uh the other things in here, we look at our uh do you want to hear my testimony on the contractor licensing and that also while I'm up here? Are are you including them all in the same public hearing?
Are we including each of each of these uh nine?
Uh well, there's fourteen items listed on the exhibits here, and I'm curious, is this public hearing on all fourteen items or just the adoption of the codes? And then we're gonna talk about permit fees and rules of practice and contractor exemption later?
Um I don't
Mr. Chairman.
Uh Commissioner Millen.
Yeah, if we could uh discuss the codes first, just so we aren't mixing apples with oranges. Plus, uh Mr. Gutierrez, thank you. For those of us that are a little slower, could you repeat the ones that are not required?
The ones that are not required, that are totally optional by this board, would include the International Residential Code, the International Mechanical Code, the International Plumbing Code, and the National Electrical Safety Code. I count four that are optional. There are five that are required by the state.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Thank you, Mr.
Commissioner Laird.
Uh Mr. Gutierrez, could you give me an example in that residential code of a of something that would that would be required of the people that you think is ridiculous? Or e- uh any of them, you could choose
You bet, you bet. So let's choose the residential code. So I live uh twenty miles from town, and I want to build a three-sided uh lane to or a pole barn for my horse to reside in. I'm required to come get a building permit under the residential code. Uh I live twenty miles from town, and I want to build a fence over a certain height. I've got to come down and get a building permit for that. I think those are undue um undue uh impositions we put on Natrona County residents when they reside out on their their own property and uh have no impact on their neighbors. If if we live in town, that's a different conversation, but living in rural Natrona County, I don't believe that's necessary.
So are you thinking that these four that that you believe aren't required, that they mainly apply to people living outside the city limits?
Absolutely. I believe the entire discussion tonight is for folks outside the city limits.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Millen.
Uh Mr. Gutierrez, uh so so what would the cutoff be? I mean, you're you're giving yourself as an example of twenty miles. Would rural residential include? Would where where do we draw the line? Or is it actually the city line that's that's where we stop? Even though some of our areas are just as densely packed as some of the other uh parts of Casper or Mills?
Mr. Millens, Chairman, I I believe that's an honest discussion we should have, and I don't think we can have that at the at the fly here, sitting here at the podium. Um um what's before you, I guess, is the city limits. And so I guess what I'm saying right now is uh the city limits would be that that line. But surely like to have an open discussion. I just use Campbell County as an example of maybe there is some common ground where it can be transitioned.
Mr. Gutierrez, have you communicated with the um Building Department or uh the Legal Department with regard to your concerns on the adoption of these uh uh four, in your opinion, optional or elective uh codes?
No, Ms. Chairman, I've come here before you guys.
Uh and and I appreciate that, but I didn't start the timer um on time, and I am positive we're over five minutes at this point. And I think you may have a bit more um from what I was
Not not from the code standpoint, I could conclude on the codes at that point, but there are some other things, yes.
Well, I I think what we need to um do is it'll be five minutes tonight. Um and and I've cut people off in this room before um when they've gone over that. And and I think we need to be consistent, and I think it's not fair if I'm not consistent. And so um I want to give you another uh sixty seconds, and then um we're gonna hear from staff. And then you're welcome to communicate with the commission um at our next meeting or before our next meeting. Um but but we'll we'll hear from staff. So go ahead for another sixty seconds, please.
Uh Ms. Chairman, my other comments and Commissioners would include the contractor licensing. I do not believe we are being uh very welcoming to outside contractors. Uh we are now requiring uh before you tonight that all licensed contractors be licensed in other municipalities before obtaining a Natrona County license. So I think we're being anti um welcoming to business. Uh furthermore, we get into licensing exemption. We're only gonna allow somebody to not use a licensed contractor if they only get one building permit in a year. If they build two barns on their property, they've got to be forced to come down and be a licensed general contractor. Again, we need to be a resource to the Natrona County residents, not a regulation agency. Um there are several things in here requiring affidavit showing qualifications, but yet we don't have a copy of an affidavit, so I'm not sure what we're supposed to provide. And lastly, uh we're now asking the Appeals Board to warrant the workmanship of a contractor. We've never been in uh workmanship, only whether it met code or didn't meet code. I think when we get into workmanship, we get into a gray area, and we we force those folks on the Appeals Board to make judgment calls that uh are outside their realm.
Thank you, sir. Uh staff, do you want to respond to any of that?
Uh Mr. Chair, uh it's my understanding that these uh each one of these codes were already operating on the twenty eighteen uh version of that, and they were uh previously adopted by the county. Uh this would essentially be an update to uh those those particular codes. So it wouldn't be taking anything away. It would just be updating what we're already operating on uh to essentially become more current with uh the the current rules. Uh as to the uh contractor licensing rules, um those, I believe, were included in the packages for informational purposes. We're not here discussing those rules tonight or adopting anything. Those are what uh the county already has in place. Uh so they were uh uh essentially just there for informational purposes.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, of our people question.
Let me let me ask a technical question of Patrick first, Commissioner Laird. Um here's a here's a technical question. Um if these are just updates, um what are these people in this room not gonna like? What are the what are the the big issues? What are the big material changes? And and I'm just talking about the the four optional ones. Just give us a sense.
The well, I guess the biggest change would be the the requirements of a one-hour uh fire bear barrier from the eighteen to the twenty-one codes. Uh it's been uh vacated. As Jared had mentioned, the these eighteen codes are historically are the same codes that were were approved the last cycle to stay in in line with the state of Wyoming and also from two thousand twelve. Because it was my understanding why our Natrona did not adopt the fifteen codes, went straight from twelve to eighteen. So these are historically are gonna be the exact same codes that were carried forward and approved.
Okay, Commissioner Laird.
So is Mr. Gutierrez right that uh the only ones that are required by the state are the five he talked about, and the other four are not required that we pass?
I I was not aware. When I spoke with with uh Fire Marshal Matthews from the state, uh he had uh with a conversation we had was the eighteen codes that were approved would be the eighteen codes that we would review for twenty-one adoption.
Well, I would like to know if that's correct for sure. I I'm not hearing you tell me you think it either is or isn't. Because I can tell you, I'm one of these guys that don't like all these codes and all these rules, especially for people living out in the county. If they're required, that's one thing. If they're not required, then I need to take a closer look at them, and I don't know how we go about doing that. But are you able to answer that question?
I I would need to double check on that, Commissioner.
Commissioner North.
Would you have any problem with us postponing those additional ones, going ahead and passing the five that we know are mandated? They're required tonight, go ahead and accepting those um and then tabling the rest of them so that we can have, so you'll have a chance to actually look at that. We can evaluate them individually and then and then move forward.
No, I think I I I think tabling uh potentially until the next meeting, I would just be sufficient for those additional codes.
Yeah, cuz I I didn't look at those four with the eyeball that they didn't need possibly not to be passed. And I'd like to look at them a little closer because I know some of these regulations uh and I I didn't really get what Mr. Gutierrez said about the issue of the somebody has to be licensed out of the county before we can license them in this county? Did I hear that right?
Contractors have to be licensed with the jurisdiction in the state of Wyoming or reciprocated through the city of Casper.
So they have to be licensed somewhere else before we can license them?
We reciprocate the city of Casper's license, and then if they are licensed in any jurisdiction in state of Wyoming, we approve them.
Is that a is that a hardship, do you think, to put on these guys if they come in and they apply for a license and they don't have any city license or whatever, but they're qualified?
There's no way to verify their qualifications other than to fall back on other jurisdictions or the city of Casper.
Well, somebody has to give them a license first. Why can't we do that?
We don't have a testing. We don't. We do not test them or have uh a process to verify their education or their experience. And the city of Casper has a licensing board, which we historically, again, have reciprocated their licensing uh process.
I see, I see. Okay, thank you very much, Patrick.
Commissioner North.
Um to go along with that, the net the now, the International Code Council has testing for each of these locations. Each of these different tests that can be applied, and that's basically what I know that's what you I know that's what our Building Department guys go through. That's what these different ones go through to get their to get their license, to show that they are competent, at least knowledgeable in the areas. Um and there are other ways that you can get it, and I know that there was a bill that went through this year uh the legislators so that you can accept additional licenses from other proximities as long as they meet the same qualifications. So so they have the ICC qualifications and stuff like that, so there are other ways they could do that. But I just want to make sure that what we're looking at tonight, then, if if we make a motion to move forward, the International Building Code is one of the ones we need to pass, the International Existing Building Code, the International Fire Code, um and the adoption of the the twenty twenty-three NEC. Are those the ones that we need to do, or is there one other one?
And the Fuel Gas Code, Commissioner.
Okay, and the Fuel Gas. Okay, all right. I just want to make sure uh that we have that covered.
Gentlemen, anything else from you?
This
Uh Commissioner
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Commissioner Millen.
Uh can we finish with public comment and then make our uh discussion at that point?
That's how these things work work. Yes, sir. I know you're not uh present, so yeah, that's that's the plan. We're gonna uh ask for additional public comment for those in opposition, so if if you guys want to have a seat for now. Uh so I am again, this is second call for individuals wishing to speak in opposition of the adoption of the twenty twenty-one ICC codes, please approach.
Hello, Commissioners, thank you. Kurt Simpson, Homie Hills, Natrona County. It seems to me that the point of issue from Mr. Gutierrez is specifically the international codes. And from my understanding, generally speaking, they are overly restrictive, particularly for those of us that live in Wyoming. Uh our state codes seem to do just fine, but when you start getting into the inter- international codes, they tend to be a little bit too overbearing. So I totally agree with his comment on that. I don't think we need the international codes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Rosemary Saban, Natrona County resident. My understanding is that the adoption of codes is because there's money attached with that federally. I haven't traced that down and figured that out. Maybe that's something to look at. But I do know, in the state of Wyoming, Converse County, no zoning. Fremont County, partial zoning, outside the city limits, that they don't include that. Johnson County, no zoning. Washeki County, no zoning. So if these other counties can get away with that, for non-commercial construction, Fremont County has no general zoning or building codes except the following in those areas with FEMA's designation flood hazard zones around Landor, Riverton, Dubois, and Hudson. That might be something for you guys to look into.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Any others wishing to speak in opposition of the adoption of the twenty twenty-one ICC codes, please approach.
Hello, Commission. Uh Jason Knope, forty-seven sixty Ross Road Road. Uh I I kind of have the same sentiment as Laird on the um codes, not requiring things that don't don't necessarily have to be required. And the other one I I'm opposed to is the contractor license. My father-in-law constructed many homes for many years in the county and never built in the city. So there are other avenues to take that test. I don't think it should be required for contractors to have to be licensed with the city. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition of the adoption of the twenty twenty-one ICC codes, please approach. There being no others to speak for or against the adoption of the twenty twenty-one ICC codes, I now declare the public hearing closed. I entertain a motion. Commissioner North.
Well, I uh do do agree that I don't particularly like the international building codes. Unfortunately, the state does adopt them, and if we don't adopt them, then we're we're left out and the state takes over. So um I do believe that they are onerous and ridiculous and a lot of things, but we do have flexibility with a lot of these. If we adopt them, if we don't, we have zero flexibility. And that's that's unfortunately, that's the way that the law is written. We didn't write the law. That came out of Cheyenne. So that's something that we have to deal with. I'm not I'm not talking about the the contractor licensing or anything else. I'm just talking about the codes. So that being said, I would move that we adopt the International Building Code, the International Existing Building Code, the International Fire Code, the ad- the uh and the adoption of the twenty twenty-one Fuel Code and the adoption of the twenty twenty-three NEC Code. And the remainder on those, I would recommend that we table those until a later date, until we can find out just exactly which ones are required for home rule, which ones aren't, and if they're not, then we can examine them individually and move forward with that.
Is there a second?
No second.
It's been moved by Commissioner North, seconded by Commissioner Frill. Uh any discussion?
I have a comment. I I don't like the International Building Code either. I had to deal with it when I was on the city council, and it was the most convoluted, nasty. I think one of the toughest issues we faced on the city council, I mean, they, where they, they can come in and inspect the paint and the inside of your house and all kinds of things that Wyoming people hate. And so we didn't pass it. And then I think it came up again and may have gotten passed. But the question I would have for Jared is are we legally required to pass that international building code? You're sure of that? Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Milne.
Yeah, sorry about this. I think that if we, we are currently running under those eighteen. I think if we remove those others, there may or may not be potential unintended consequences. Unfortunately, and by just removing them without having a review of them, we are opening that door for those consequences. I agree that if we don't need them, if they're reviewed and we find that they shouldn't be here, we don't need them as a county, then yeah, let's remove them. But if we just haphazardly remove them with this vote and not look at them again, or look at them at some point, what's going to happen between now and then? If we include the whole package, we maintain our status quo, it'll allow staff time to review those non-essential codes and, and make it, give us an educated evaluation of them, that we can make them educated votes. Right now, I just don't feel like we're making a good vote where we don't know what we're cutting out. Have no idea.
Thank you, Commissioner Milne. My, I wanted to clarify, the motion is to adopt the IBC, the existing building code, the fire code, the fuel gas code, and the electric code. So I may have those just abbreviated, but everybody knows what I'm talking about. The others would not be adopted tonight. Instead, I thought we heard from, from council that maybe in two weeks we can get additional information, including whether, whether we have optionality on these or what the big changes are, the material differences. So my feeling is that if we go ahead and approve the five tonight that are required, we've done that. And, and I guess I just like our staff to either confirm or tell me I'm wrong if there's any harm or negative consequence of not adopting these other four for the next two weeks.
Did the motion include the word table, those four, Mr. Chairman? Because that means that they're put on hold until exactly what you just said. And I don't think that we're abandoning them. We've tabled them till a future meeting.
Counsel.
Mr. Chair, I believe the motion was to table the remainder of everything that was left on the list instead of just taking those out entirely. But I don't believe there would be any consequences in tabling these for a two-week period. Again, we're already pretty behind. And I don't think that an additional two weeks to check into these questions would cause me harm.
Very good. So I think we understand the motion includes the tabling. So it's not just no action on the four remaining. It would be to take action to table. Maybe semantics, but in any event. So that's obviously an option. We know what the other options are. Are there any other comments on the motion? Thank you, counsel. Then I call for the vote at this time. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Now we are here for the main event. We're here to allow public comment. Just a quick show of hands, how many of you attended the last meeting on this subject? Great. My feeling is, well, now another show of hands, how many of you would like to speak tonight or think you might want to speak tonight? All right. So a number of people. We're sure happy that you're back and we're sure happy that you're here if you weren't here last time. We don't need your applause. We don't need your other commentary. That's not useful to us. It's not going to impact any decisions we make now or in the future, and it's disruptive and it wastes time. So please hold your comments. Please be cordial and will be the same to you all. What I'd like to do tonight is let the people that, if you want, let the people that didn't get to speak last time speak first tonight. So again, just for public comment, opening it up, come on down and please introduce yourself. And then you'll have five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Roberto Faris. I live on Coats Road. Just wanted to make a few points. I'm going to start by saying something ridiculous to make my point. To raise the money for the airplane, we can turn Coats Road into a national quarry park. And then charge entrance for people to see the only quarry in a residential area. And the point I make that is because the quarry, I don't believe belongs in a residential area where it affects people's lives, water. I mean, we need, we're made up of seventy percent water we need to drink every day in order to survive. If the ecosystem up there is so, is so fragile, that one time, I have this little creek behind my house that every three or four years goes there, then it disappears. I tripped on a big rock and I almost broke my head. I said, man, I gotta move this rock. I moved the rock and all the water went in a hole. That's how fragile the water situation is up there. So I live in a residential mountain area. I have permits for wells. And now I pay the taxes that goes to the school. And so now if somebody upstream of me goes through the hard spot, this little shallow gravel which where they want to use, and then goes, then there's another hardtop and disrupts my water. And what do I do? So sometimes in the winter there, I couldn't get out of the house for four days. So how am I going to go to town and, and get water? Do I have to melt snow? Or I don't, I don't know what the answer is to that. Or like if somebody in town wants, has a permit to plant a tree, and I have to call four one one to see if there's any pipes under there before you can plant the tree. And we know there's pipes above us where all the people depend on those little shallow waters that, that, from the mountain. And they tell me that you can't dig there because you might disrupt your neighbor's water. But I say, I have a permit. So then I just dig and break all the PVC pipe or whatever, and my neighbor can't get water. So what does that guy, what does that neighbor do to recourse? Does he, does he call the authorities? Does he call the sheriff? It's like almost an assault on his livelihood because he can't drink. He can't bathe, he can't wash. So do we start doing meals, water on wheels, like meals on wheels? That's why I'm trying to be, and then the city can have a national park entrance in charge. And then if they want to get closer to see after many years, if we start growing humpbacks like the camels that we drink once a week as we evolve without water up there. So I'm not trying to be funny, but this is serious because let's say somebody is on a medication for high blood pressure. They need to get hydrated every day. If they get dehydrated, they could have renal failure. If they can't get to town or haul water, that's a lot of work. And by being in a residential area, I assume I have water and it's zoned residential, right? I mean, and so there has to be some rules where in a residential area, you can't dig big places. And then all these tourists that are coming and all these nice things we're doing for our city, the first thing they see is a big hole on the side of the mountain. And if I was in, you know, the wildlife and all that, I wish I was a deer so I could move to Teton County and just roam around and, but after all of that starts, all the animals are gone, everything is gone. What studies are we going to do on what? There are more no animals there. There's no water. My house is going to be worth maybe fifty percent of what it is. I can't move anymore. All these years of working for nothing. I'm not opposed to gravel pits. I love Wyoming. I'm here by choice. I could work all over Europe. I'm here by choice in Wyoming as a, it's the best state in the Union. And this S forty-four, which brings out another thing, yeah, the rancher can do his little mine, so he can do his road. And that's a great rule for that little rancher. But there has to be a modification to this rule where you can't do it in a residential area. And so because that SF forty-four is not like the Ten Commandments. We can't change the, one of the commandments out of the Ten Commandments. That's why laws are made. So according to how they need to work and not work, oh, boy. Well, I'm trying to practice being a politician. I approve this message. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I hope you really consider not doing this. It's not a good idea. Or also really, we have to do the national park thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a comment. Well, if they leave, I would just say it real easy. I hear about this water problem, but it would be more impactful on me if you had a hydrologist that examined that and concluded that was his opinion. Would be very helpful to the Commissioners to know that.
All right. Come on down, sir.
My name is Robert Strohman. I live on forty-one, forty-five Coats Road.
Sir, would you state your last name again?
Strohman, S T R O H M A N. I'm a resident on Coats Road. I have a petition here with just the people on Coats Road had signed. And if you would like a copy, I could give to you.
Yes, please. Can you just give them all to him and then he'll pass them down?
Anyway, I'm like Roberto. I'm not a public speaker. And just got a little bit to read here. It says, we, the people of Nantrona County, which live on Coats Road, don't want to have haul trucks to noise the air pollution, the destruction of our road, the danger of the traffic at Coats in two twenty. It's a four to seven percent grade from the top to the bottom. And if you have a haul truck, everybody knows they use jake brakes. Jake brakes are against the law and the city limits. So is what I would like to see. If you people think that I'm telling you a story, come out on parked by the National Guard Armory and listen to the trucks coming in from the west. There's no jake brakes, but boy, they sure know how to use them. So anyway, you gotta wake up, people. This is not for thirty days or three years. This is thirty to a hundred years. Once they start opening this gravel pit, it's never going to close. And I myself and the people on Coats Road that live in the city limits, we and you guys had to pay a third each to have that road paved. And that's only a four-inch laydown. How long do you think that's going to last with a trailer and a pup? And I don't know about you, but it's hard to swallow. Happen to pay for everybody else to utilize the road. And anyway, I'd say it's people, we gotta wake up. They get this started, we're done. There's no water, there's no life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Brian Connolly. I live at seventy-five Honeysuckle. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will be brief in my comments. I did have some real concerns with this gravel pit proposal. Seems to be in exactly the wrong place. There's, the gravel, as I understand, is in the pediment, the mountain pediment, those ridges, those hills between the drainages. That mountain pediment serves as kind of like riprap for a river, right? So it channels water, it keeps erosion at bay. And if they mine that pediment out, it will, it will affect the way that water flows, et cetera. And I'm not sure that even a hydrologist would know how, how that effect would be. It would be a difficult model to make to see where the water would flow, if it would flow where it is now. Infrastructure to the county. I, I believe that if, if those haul trucks start to degrade that road, then it would be the county that would, would have to come in and fix that road. I'm not sure who would have to pay for it. But I don't believe that road withstand the infrastructure. And of course, the home devaluation and that subsequent loss of revenue for many years down the line to the county. And those are some of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Travis Garska. I live at fifty-two oh three Coats Road. So my main concern, I got several, but the water and the dust. Well, my front pasture is right along Coats Road, probably within twenty feet. My horses and livestock hang out in that front pasture a majority of the time because it's the greenest grass I have on the property. When I work my horses, studies have shown that they consume about six hundred gallons of air every, every hour. So they get lung disease, just like we do. So we talk about the loss, the loss of an airline. We can't get it back. What if I lose my livestock? I can't get it back. What if I lose my water? Can't get it back. What if I lose my home, my net worth? I work very hard in this community to pay for the property that I have today. I'm very proud of that property. To see it go to heck because of a gravel pit scares the heck out of me. So I wish that we would shut this pit down and think of the people out on Coats Road and in Squaw Creek and everybody that's going to be affected by this gravel pit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, Board, Austin Burgess, Casper resident. I'm representing Central Wyoming Trails Alliance. We were here last week. I didn't speak. There was another person here on my behalf, or our behalf. So we're hitting on the recreational aspect of this and the recreational amenities that Casper doesn't have. We don't have a whole lot of them, right? We don't have a lot of shoulder season use abilities in this community. This is one of those really unique gems that we have to be able to access. Now, as we know, this area is not, has never been an official recreation use area. And as far, as far as Central Wyoming Trails Alliance is concerned, or CWTA is concerned, we are drastically trying to change that in the community. We've been working with a few of you, with the, with the commission, as well as the Parks Advisory Board to, to gain additional recreation opportunities for our community. To take these away from our community is a detriment. To take these away from our community is detrimental to everybody who lives in this area and in fact will actually drive away people if we don't have these recreational opportunities. A recent study by the, the National, let's see, it's the, the Board of Realtors has stated that every foot you live closer to a trailhead increases the home value by a certain dollar amount. And it's anywhere from about $3 to $15 every foot that you are closer to them. So as, as we have all these residences out there, it will actually increase their property values as... Excuse me, I'm, I'm drawing a blank. This has been kind of an emotional deal for us, for everybody in this room, on losing, on losing these amenities and stuff like this. Frankly, frankly, it's, it's disgusting that we have somebody that wants to come in and actually take away one of these areas. Now, I understand that, you know, the county does not have a conditional use request or anything right now on these properties, but to, to lose one of these amenities that we have in the community is detrimental, is very much detrimental. We are working with ENCOREC, which is a Natrona County Outdoor Recreation Collaborative. We are actually part of that organization as well, and State Outdoor Rec, to figure out how we can secure these state lands so they don't get attacked by these companies that come in and want to take these recreational opportunities away from us. Now, is mining a bad deal? Absolutely not. This is what makes Wyoming Wyoming. But this is not the area for that. This is an area that a lot of people have stated and have shown through social media that this is an amazing area, a beautiful area, awesome recreational opportunities in these areas. And we just ask that you consider this, if this does come before you on a conditional use, that you deny that. And as a, as a educational side of this, that we do have user groups out there, including ours, that are trying to secure these state lands and also county properties to be able to protect these for generations to come. We have, we deal with very, very much so cross-generational activities with running, cycling, equestrian use. And it'd be, it'd be detrimental to Casper, Natrona County, and Wyoming if we lose these. Governor Gordon said in, what was it, a year ago in the State of the State address, that recreation was the number two priority. Now, he states that in vetoing the Senate File 44, that the state needs to be controlled state lands. No, the people control state lands. The people control county lands. And that's what we're all here doing, is being the voice of the public, of the people, supporting what we want for our lands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. So I appreciate the comments, and I know that people have agreement and disagreement with certain things that are being said, but every time we're clapping, I don't know, we just are going to slow things down. I don't want to have to take recesses. Let's just have the comments come and we'll get through this efficiently. Yes, ma'am?
Rosemary Saban, Natrona County resident. As previously stated, the misguided attitudes of people is exactly why our government, from the local to federal levels, are in the current state that they are in. The belief that individual involvement is not required because lack of ownership of a personal dog in the fight strongly aids in more regulations and control, which costs more and reduces our constitutionally granted freedom paid for with the lives and blood of many. All of Natrona County is our own backyard, along with this state and this nation. The correction of problems begins in our backyard, and again, Natrona County is all of our backyard. Corrupt spending and a lack of transparency is a rampant issue affecting us all. The fact of the matter is that the location of the proposed mine would be a benefit to this county by reducing transportation costs of high-quality gravel for the roads and concrete products. On the other hand, if our elected representation was working for the majority of the people, the roughly 75,000 who reside outside of the city limits, we, the taxpayers, would not be burdened by the following costs that are funded by property taxes. $3 million annually funding a library determined to provide duplicate services already provided for, by the people. The relentless want to purchase or build a new facility that's been voted down each time it's been proposed for millions more than we currently pay for through taxation would not be a consideration. $1,343,494 to date has been paid for an airline subsidy, now requesting $2.1 million additionally, including state and county funding. One, one whose flights are single, to a single destination daily with no contribution by those who benefit from its cost of the county residents and charitably donated. $441,000 was the original request for nine months. $880,000 requested after that, and $644,000 was paid last year for the fourth quarter. Why Casper claims that it generates $11 million to local business, none of which is returned to the county funds directly? Why then should those businesses not be supporting Delta Sky West for the increased revenue of, if it's truly profitable? Why are flights leaving Natrona County less than full capacity and tickets are priced on a cost scale? When a $320,000 purchase of a cat dozer was requested by Mike Hagler of County Road and Bridge after roughly $90,000 was paid for an eight-month lease to be included in the total purchase price last year, it was strongly objected to by then-Chairman Frill and now-Chairman Nicolason. It was presented with a huge savings and a great asset to the county for much less than the price of a new equivalent machine that would have cost $500,000. Fortunately, the other members of this commission realize the benefits and the need for prudent spending, exactly what we empower and entrust our elected representatives to do as a condition of employment. On another matter of community health building, the work session from February 6 seems to suggest that money is being wasted on the 12th and Conwell location in material removal and site costs associated with that parcel of land. As Mr. North said, the project cost was originally $30 million. Now it's increased to 34.5. Where indeed will it stop? The roughly north of $10 million in federal funding doesn't go far against $4 to $5 million in addition, as Mr. Laird mentioned, and it comes with strings, as it always does. Should a different location be being considered with input from the people who are funding this? Mr. Nicolason said there were several locations of consideration, but only two were mentioned in the work session meeting. The Source Gas property adjacent to the current location and the city site that only has utilities neighboring, not actually onsite. What were the other sites and would they have been cheaper to the taxpayers? Is that information a matter of national security? The six months of site work to include the removal of 45,000 cubic yards of material and hauling in new just doesn't seem to add up to the architectural analysis of Mr. Dagel in pushing the project out for another year. What is another year against doing the job right and saving money in the long run anyway to the commission? Who's profiting and who's footing the bills? As I said, a gravel mine to close so close to Casper would have serious benefits and many of the costs associated. But when I see visible wasted spending, certainly it would offset those transportation costs for more quality material from another location and put the needed focus back on the people
Commission, how you doing? Jason Canob, 4760 Ross Ridge Road. I'm with Field Creek Ranch on Coats Road. I'm also owner of Edge Engineering Group here in Casper, Wyoming. We just finished a 150-page groundwater study report and submitted it to DEQ, State Engineer and Geologist, for 320-acre chunk of land north of town here. That's all been approved and through DEQ and through all their nitpick and all that. You guys will probably be seeing that come across your desk here soon. Other projects that we've worked on lately, we've, we've been working with GeoSynTech and DEQ with underground storage tanks with the PCE plume that's under Casper that goes from Collin Street to the river. We've mapped that out and we, we test the groundwater and we, we track how the groundwater moves through all that, and, and we've been trying to treat that in the last seven years. The other project we've been working on, we, we monitor all the groundwater on above and below the Cody Shell, around 1,500 acres of the city landfill. We track all of its water movement up and below the shell, and we track its, its plume. There's a plume there that goes into the river, and we're working with DEQ. We've been working on that. I've been working on that personally since 2008. Cleaning up and, and the treatments and, and things we're doing with that. And we track the methane migration as well up there. So we do a lot of movement with gas through, through the soils as well. Another project we worked on recently, we, we partnered with Stan Tech Engineering. They designed the river reconstruction here in town. And we worked with them on all the groundwater studies with the, what, what would that do with the construction of the equipment in the river? Our company was onsite every time equipment was in the river. Particularly, this was very important between First Street and the railroad bridge because BP has that barrier wall there. So we had to monitor all of their pumping stations and how that affected groundwater, how the equipment in the water affected the groundwater. And we were the first instant command. If there was any sort of plume that was released, we were onsite every time equipment was in that river. So these are a few things that we've done just recently that are still ongoing, that we work on. So our, our family has 13 water rights up there, currently. I have four with our property. There's 255 water wells and water rights. I originally said 300, but now I've started to actually have time to start studying this, like... And so just want to go through ours real quick. They're all, all shallow and within that alluvial deposit that we've been talking about. And, and Brian Conley is correct, it's extremely hard to study something like that. It's not like north of town. This is a very complicated water system that we're talking about up there. So we have one well that is six feet and produces nine gallons a minute. We have one that's nine feet, 15 gallons a minute. Seven feet, 15 gallons a minute. We have one on the surface, that's actually a pipe that we trenched into the, one of those hillsides, the alluvial deposits. It's seven feet into the hillside, and we get two gallons a minute out of that pipe. So that's considered a well as well, but that's not a well. That's in the side of one of those alluvial deposits. We have another one of those that is a negative one foot. That's another pipe we put into the side of the hill, and we get .05 gallons per minute, but it feeds our cows up on the upper pasture. That's another pipe that's not vertically down. And then we have several water rights, surface water rights. My well is eight feet. I have another one that's eight feet. And then we do have one that an uncle of ours drilled to 100 back in the 70s. I wasn't really around then, so I couldn't explain to him that was a waste of money. But the water is, it's coming at 15 feet, but the well was drilled to 100 feet. Shale, black shale, and that's what you're seeing in that log. So that's kind of just a quick of what our wells are. There's several wells on here, and I've only been able to go through about 50. It's very time-consuming to study everyone's water rights. And it's all public records, State Engineers Office. You can create a login account and have access to them. But there's several, several that are very, very shallow. There's a couple here that piqued my interest that I wanted to bring up to you guys tonight. I got one here on Squaw Creek. And I'll, I can, I'll hand you these after I'm done. This gentleman's getting five gallons per minute at an elevation of 20 feet of depth. I want to look at his drill logs, but he drilled down to 1,370 feet, black shale, but he's got five gallons a minute. So that 40 gallons or $40 a foot, that was pretty worth it to that gentleman. I got another one here on, this is actually in Skyline Ranches, which is just below my property, on a lower elevation. This gentleman drilled to 2,248 feet. He's in the Lakota Formation. He went through the Frontier Formation, Thermopolis Formation, the Fusion, and he's in the Lakota Formation at 2,248 feet. And the report here says he's getting 15 gallons a minute, and it says water. So there's definitely more research that has to be done on that well. But just to let you know, I, I did talk to a directional driller on the east side of the, of the mountain. They drilled 3,500 feet at a 45-degree angle for McMurray's and finally found some water. So it's not something that people can do for 50 bucks a foot.
Can I approach and give you these? Handout? Set up. If you just take, you just take the first package, they're all in order.
My name is Greg Wager. I'm at 7,006855 Coats Road. The first thing in that packet you'll see is an email back from Keith Gilli, I believe his name is, from the Wyoming DEQ. And I've highlighted where he says the DEQ does not have statutory authority for property values, impact the city Casper roads, impact Natrona County roads, safety of hauling heavy loads of aggregate downhill, recreation, rollies, and noise. So the DEQ's saying we don't control that. We just issue a permit. What we do have statutory authority on is the next listings. And then if you turn to second page, I have highlighted under air quality division. It says that they list some regulations, and if the county has a restriction on quarry location, the applicants will be required to meet the location requirement as part of the air quality permitting process. Just so we understand that. And then if we move on, and I, I've got you that so you can read it. And you read on to your, to your zoning from 2002, I copied the requirement for conditional use permit. And it says approval criteria about halfway down. It said grounding, granting, which you would have to do because we're all in MR1 zoning for extracting mining operations. So you would have to issue a conditional use permit for any LMO or small or large mining. So these say, granting the condition will not contribute to an overburdening of county services. That means fire, emergency, and road. Granting the condition will not cause substantial or unmitigated traffic, parking, or environmental problems. You've got to, you've got to approve the CUP once that's satisfied. Will not impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood. Okay? We spent, what I understand, $275,000 to write this code that we all signed off on. So the next one says, granting that will not detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare, or nullify the intent of the land use plan of this zoning resolution. Okay? The conditional use complies with the use-specific standards of Chapter 4 and zoning district. The conditional use complies with all other relevant standards. So I, I've copied that, so I know you guys signed off on it and paid $275,000 to have it done. Of taxpayer money, I just want to make sure we're all aware of what's in there, because I'm not sure we were. And so I copied that for you. And then I've copied a map for you to show you all the leases that Prism Logistics has. And all of them, except for this top one, if you hold it north, is Section 30. That is zone light agricultural. Everything else is MR1, Mountain Residential 1. So I copied that for you. Then I went to the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan, and on the front of it, I made that copy because Jim Mill, Dave North, and Peter Nicolason are, are actively on the board when this was written. And then you, you start down through there. And then you, you start down through there and you'll see my highlights of that plan over and over again. And I'll read you one. It says the 2004 Casper Mountain Steering Committee Mission Statement. Our intent is to devote wisely and responsibility to protect and nurture the integrity of this special landscape. So here in Casper, we have two natural resources. We have the river running through and we have the side of the mountain. And that's what this is focusing on. And it, and I will say it again, like I said it last time. If, if you read my highlights, you can see what's in that plan. And, and why I've highlighted that is so you can see it. And, and I just want to end with that, uh, we'll all be in Cheyenne on the fourth. And, uh, we've got almost 3,000, uh, signatures now on petitions. I don't have these copied, so I don't want to give them to you. But, but I'll copy them and bring them in. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Steve Logan. I'm at 5280 Squaw Creek. A lot of our water actually depends, uh, on a survival basis. We know that we can survive about three days without having any water. My house, my irrigation, my animals, um, all depend on the two wells that I have on this area. I, I deeply depend on everything that actually happens. On the hydrolysis, I guess maybe I could be considered one of the best hydrolysis considered. I can clearly see the water that flows in from the one side of the spring creek that actually flows into the property. That I can see a cow move just about up there. And by the way, the herd moves, it can either cause more water to flow or less water to actually flow as the, as the herds move around up there. So we're not talking about heavy equipment moving. We're talking about a 2,000 pound cow that's moving around up there. I think this is just some of our issues that we're actually attaining from is the water rights. There are several other ones that we actually have to be aware of as well. I just don't understand how this can be taken away from us because of a company greed to make money and not serve what is right, our human rights. Where have we lost all the value for our fellow humans? The true, trues have a very good name out there. They are a great set of folks. And I think everybody has commented on that. I've heard throughout the last three meetings that we've had here at what great folks they are. I just don't understand what they are wanting to do to proceed to convince us to actually go through in making this gravel pit in the area that it's at. I think there's more behind it than what we can all see. I kind of challenged, uh, I do challenge Prism Logistics and Kyle True to stand up and do what is right for our community. The trues have always been there in Casper to help build what they have built. I don't understand why they're not there now for us when we actually need it. Please take this time to consider of moving on and away from these, uh, leases. I would like to see these leases pulled all the way to the side and out of commission for anybody else to ever get ahold of another lease like this that could actually destroy not only my family's, but my family's history that may be in need of, of water in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this or any other topic?
Name's Alvin Grover, Natrona County residence, 40 plus years. At the beginning, you're saying you don't have enough money to keep this airplane going. Okay, that comes from taxpayers. Property value. I don't know how much money, uh, is coming in from Prism and True. It must be quite a bit because it's got to be more than what the property value is up there. And the people pay every month, every day. The city, the county gets taxes every single day. And when you take that away, you say about the fishing in the, in the river? Well, that won't be there very long. I don't want to fish and look at something like that up on the hill. The mule deer is not going to be there. Neither is the antelope. Oh, there goes several thousands of dollars of tags, state money that's going to go someplace else. So they may be bringing in a couple of nickels, but we're stepping over a dollar trying to get to that dime. So what I would say is if it shows up, and I got a little letter from, uh, Steve Harshman today. He said that there's only nine people between here and when that thing is going to come in. And five of them are mostly in this room. You can stop it or not. That's your choice.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Michael Ferald, Coats Road resident. Uh, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, good evening. I stand before you as concerned resident, committed to common sense and critical thinking. The January 6th committee ex, the experts made a statement that President Trump did not ask for National Guard troops. If we step back and look at the bigger picture, the truth is he didn't. And also his chief of staff did. So who was right? The experts on the committee or us, the people with common sense and critical thinking? So let's consider something less subjective. Dr. Benoit Mandelbrot, a renowned mathematician, found the coastline of Great Britain measures 2,400 kilometers long when he used a 20, a 200 kilometers measuring stick. But that coastline extends 1,000 kilometers longer with a 50 kilometer measuring stick. He showed that with an infinitely small ruler, the coastline's length is infinite. How absurd. But the expert, Mandelbrot is not technically wrong. Same coastline, different rulers, different results. In 325 B.C., Pytheus of Mycelia first circumnavigated the island of Great Britain. This begs the question, is the coastline truly infinite or is it navigable? Step back. What do you think? COVID vaccinated women have a miscarriage rate eight times that of unvaccinated women. Yet the experts said, take the jab. The British House of Commons asked why experts omitted collateral damage from COVID models. The response was it was beyond their scope. No one stepped back to take a look. This shows the limitation of relying solely on expert models without applying common sense. My point is not to impeach expert opinions, but simply to point out an example. From the Prism Logistics Exploration Permit, they wrote, quote, "A warm and cool seasoned seed mix will be used to remediate the site." I know from experience that you can't throw grass seed on that dirt and expect any meaningful amount of reclamation. You won't find an arms length expert who has had their hands in the dirt off of Coats Road to the extent my neighbors and I have. We can give you a lot of information. Justification for proposals often hinges upon the words of experts because surely the experts know what they're talking about. Yet appealing to authority is a time old fallacy. Relying solely on expert opinions and not applying critical thought does not bring wisdom. It only liberates man from moral decisions and gives a veneer of absolution by instilling plausible deniability. Passing the buck. Maybe you've sensed this. It seems that two weeks ago Prism Logistics and the people in the room were on different pages. Loosely speaking, we heard it's just a 15 acre LMO and we may not even do it. If we step back, what do we find? Importantly, the land constituting 15 acres of an LMO does not account for roads, which means a full scale mine could be developed from seemingly modest beginnings. Over 2,300 acres are leased. From my research, conservatively, two crushers operating can produce 500,000 tons of gravel annually. Round numbers, that's $10 million per year gross at $20 per ton. Applying a reasonable multiplier reveals this project could be worth 50 million. Double that to 100 million with high end crushers, high volume crushers. Would you stop at 15 acres with that much involved? So there's a reason the public doesn't treat this as just 15 acres. Using common sense and critical thinking, we see the 15 acres as merely the tip of a much larger project leading to unintended and in some cases potentially irreversible consequences like losing access to water. Now ask yourself, would a 2,300 acre mine alter the character of your neighborhood? Of course. So why wouldn't the first step in that process do the same thing? Governor Gordon vetoed the combined desires of Wyoming residents and the knowledge of representatives and senators by vetoing SF 44. I urge us to do the opposite. Merge expert advice with community wisdom. Let's safeguard our Natrona County's future with the decisions that reflect a deep understanding and the voices of those directly impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Andrea Strowman. I live at 4145 Coats Road. You heard from my husband earlier touching on the petition that we had signed by both the city and county residents on two separate petitions about the detrimental use of Coats Road. I'd also like to mention in your consideration, if this were to, to occur and the heavy traffic destroyed Coats Road, what would it do to 220? A tractor trailer with a dump bed does not require one lane to turn in. It requires both. Does that mean that the county or the city would be willing to split the difference to extend that to four lanes in either direction in order to turn onto Coats Road? Would it mean the, uh, addition of another traffic light? Okay. Robertson Road, Coats Road, Valley and Paradise. What does that do to the flow of traffic for people commuting east and west to work? What about school traffic, school buses, parents trying to take their children to school? Attempting to enter CY Avenue heading east in the morning from Coats Road, you'd best be there before 7:00 a.m. Otherwise you have quite the wait. Now add to that a tractor trailer deciding that I'm going to take up both lanes now. Bye. We've had people in the past who have slid through the bottom of Coats Road and into oncoming traffic on CY Avenue. Thankfully, there have been no deaths to my knowledge. But you put that with the wonderful incorporation of Jake brakes to slow down a vehicle of that size. The county maintains the road very well now with plows and sanding. But what's going to happen when it ices over? There are going to be more accidents. So I'd just like you to consider the further expenditure that this would cost. Whom? City, county, state, trues, residents? It's all of us who have a stake in this. It isn't just the people on Coats Road and Squaw Creek. There are far more people involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else like to make public comment on this or any other topic?
Tracy Lamont, 9855 Crimson Dawn Road. I just got something to pass out to you real fast. What that is, is a copy out of, uh, Land and Water Law Review was written by a, a gal at the University of Wyoming, but the title is Mining Law, Gravel Extraction Is Local Control Over Small Gravel Mining, The Best Road For Regulation. River Springs Limited Liability Company versus Board of County Commissioners of County of Teton. Heather, I'd like to thank you for digging that out and you conveyed that to me last week, Peter, uh, or at the last meeting. So I went in and did a little reading on that, but if you come down to the third paragraph, you have to read all the case notes to make this make sense. And I'd encourage you, every one of the commissioners to, to do that. There are 16 pages. And there's two cases incorporated into that went to the Wyoming Supreme Court and I can't find where it's ever been overturned. But it says River Springs commenced an action for declaratory, clerk, uh, declaratory judgment in the Ninth Judicial District Court for Teton County on October 4th, 1993. On January 21st, 1994, the district court certified three questions to the Wyoming Supreme Court. And this is an interest, one the court held that sand, gravel and rock and limestone are not mineral resources. But if you look into, uh, the land board and, and their, their pages, they'll tell you that it is a mineral resource and that's never been overturned on them. So you know, the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing here. I know this doesn't make sense until you go in and read it. But it also says allows the county commissioners to limit the land use by foreclosing the extraction of sand, gravel, rock and limestone. And the county's authority to prohibit land use is not preempted by the state. That's a pretty solid, uh, statement there. And I, you guys are the, she's got two legal beagles here or three. You can sort that out on your own, but I, I, but if the county permits gravel extraction, the DEQ has the statutory authority to regulate those regulations. So basically what, what I figured out here, to hell with the landlord. We're wasting our time talking to them. And the DEQ obviously is the next up on the slate on it. But it, they're going to bounce it right back to you guys for a CUP here. And so I'm encouraging you, just say no. Just say no. And deny the conditional use permit. Let these people get on with their lives without the disruption. I mean, we've built us three meeting rooms now, back to back to back. And this is an emotional thing and that isn't the place for a scenic gravel pit. I can tell you there is no such thing, but you know, you're going to see that from the minute you probably drive down, uh, the highway by the airport, you can look up in there and you're going to see that gravel pit right there. So at that, God, I can't believe we got two minutes left on them. But the, uh, the moral of the story is study, study, uh, uh, River Springs. And it, and study it very carefully. We need to quantify whether or not that case has been overturned. But that bounces the authority right back to the county. And that's what our governor tossed out on us yesterday, which wasn't going to do us any good until July 24th. And if Kyle was scrambling and he's already two years ahead of the ballgame from where we're trying to react to, as near as I can tell, on him. But he could have got in under the July 21st deadline, but there's still a, a court case hanging out here. And the DEQ also requires that you have, it's right on their checklist that you have to have a, uh, uh, CUP. So just deny it and, and you know, if they come back and sue you, so be it. There's already a court case here that didn't involve state land, but I got one closing question to ask you guys. You know, if it were us and private property up there that wanted to, so let's say Mr. Wager wanted to go ahead with his property and say to hell with it, I'm going to mine gravel there. He'd have to go through the CUP process and you'd be telling him what he'd have to do on it. And now, why does the state get a free pass according to this? I don't think they do. I don't think they do. They're a landowner and has to be responsible and the counties here, you guys are playing your role and just say no. It's pretty simple. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I live on Wolf Creek. I don't know if anybody's here from Prozess Moblistics tonight or not, but I was just wondering, are they going to do any drilling or blasting while they're up there? What's that going to do to the foundations?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else before Commissioner comments? All right. Well, hey, thanks, everybody. We sure appreciate you coming out. I think you're aware that there is no application in front of the county at this point for a conditional use permit. I would tell you that you really are impacting us when you come and you tell us your background and your stories, your concerns. We are elected to hear you. We're elected to hear the people on Coats Road and Squaw Creek Road, the people in other areas of the county and the people within the city limits too. And those people are our constituents as well and we've heard from a number of people that live inside of one or more, one of the municipal boundaries. You know, I'm going to start out Commissioner comments tonight because I guess I have that authority. So we believe that the county does have authority to regulate this proposed application if and when it comes in, whether it's state land or private land. Okay? That is our, the advice we have and the veto of Senate File 44 on legal counsel advice and how we view things, we still have authority. And so I just want you people to know that that's how we're looking at this at the present time. The state won't get a free pass. I am happy to hear that some people are going down in front of the Office of State Lands Board. I think that'll be important. I was disappointed with the governor's veto. I was surprised. I know Representative Harshman really went to battle for this community and I listened to his testimony in conference committee and he worked hard for Nitrona County and I am appreciative of that. I think it was a good process that landed us with a good bill and I was disappointed in the governor. You know, we are aware of the approval criteria and we're aware some of those factors are objective and some are subjective and change of character of the neighborhood and I think some of the others impact to the value of adjoining properties or adjacent properties. I think those are some of the subjective ones and at the appropriate time, we will hope that the community is well represented to come in front of the commission at the public hearing and provide that which will be evidence at the time. What we're hearing tonight, what we heard at the last meeting, isn't evidence that we can rely on when the application actually comes in front of us. So keep that in mind that when there is a public hearing and there'll be plenty of notice of that public hearing, that people show up. Wanted to turn to some other comments that were made not related to this. Let's talk about dozers now or spending money. I made it very clear and anybody that listens to the meeting will recall that my concern was with the process, not on buying a dozer, but it was on having to consider that two months before a budget process. $350,000 is a lot of money to me. I would say that the timing wasn't my favorite and we had an option to continue to lease the machine for a period of time at least. You know, the process to select the health department site, that was basically a multi-year process and we are a long way down the road and we looked at cost savings and we're continuing to look at cost savings to bring that down. Pushing it off to another year, we all have experience and we all keep hoping when we go to the lumber store, when we go to the car dealership, that prices come down. They haven't been coming down and that's, we were, we were pretty much guaranteed that prices for constructing a new health department were not going to be lower in next year, years down the road. In any event, I do, I'm going to end it there. I do appreciate the people's interest in this issue and in our meetings in general. And just know that you can always reach out to any of us. Our contact information is on our website and you can sure grab us and we'll try and respond as best we can, you know, before, during, and after meetings. Thank you, Commissioner Freel.
Well, I appreciate everybody coming here and all the comments have been made. A couple of things that I want to hit on is that there was a lady that came up and was talking about Highway 220 and that's something I've been discussing a lot with people here lately and you know, a follow-up conversation by whoever wants to go have that conversation should happen with YDOT. She's right. She hit it right on the head. They're, they're not going to allow, you wouldn't think that they're going to allow, you know, a tractor-trailer pulling another dump behind it to cut across Highway 220. I guarantee the city's not going to let you turn and head into the city and tear up their roads with that kind of weight on the road. In order to, you'd have to divert yourself out west of town and in order to do that, they're going to want another light put in there and they're not going to stack a light on Valley or Paradise and then Valley and then Coats and then Robertson Road. So follow-up conversations like you've been having with us would be very well spent talking to engineers at YDOT. Same thing with Section 36 up there, that my understanding, that's one of the bigger whitetail deer populations up there and follow-up conversations with game and fish. Can they do anything about it? Maybe not, but it certainly helps out in the arguments that we have moving forward as far as how it affects things. You're affecting wildlife, you're affecting road travel, you know, roads that are going to get torn up. Everybody knows that city, I was with city council at the time that it passed to have the city, the county and the homeowners on Coats Road pave their road. I had a conversation with the city manager today and he feels like he's got a dog in the fight when the money that was just paid out less than two years ago to pave that road is now potentially going to look at damage and who's going to pay for that? Who's going to maintain that after it was just put in? So I guess the point is, I appreciate you coming here. Obviously, it's an emotional thing. I feel it when you guys come up here, but at the same time, I think you need to get, everybody that potentially can be involved needs to, your voice needs to be heard to them. And following up and going to Cheyenne is the very good, there's a lot, you guys are, you're doing what you need to do and you're doing it right, but I would make sure that you hit everybody that this is going to affect or every agency that will have anything to say about it, I would let your voice be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner North.
First of all, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight for more than one reason. I appreciate your behavior because we have had a lot of times that this courtroom has been packed and it hasn't been very cohesive to communication would be the best way to put that and that's not what I'm seeing with this group. And that goes a long way. We do really appreciate that. We want to hear your voices and I know a lot of you have sent us emails and I've responded to quite a few of them, so, and we will continue to do that. But I do want to make sure that we have to work when it comes down. If, if it comes to the point where we have a conditional use permit requested in front of us, what we have to work on is facts and that's what we have to look at. There have been a lot of things that have brought up, that have been brought up that are very factual, we know that, but you have to have, we have to have that information solidified and it's not, it's not real difficult to do. There's some of this stuff is like a traffic study. There's a lot of places out there and we're not asking you to do a traffic study, so don't misunderstand that, but I'm saying that there's a lot of that information that can be readily obtained and put together as far as what the damage of a 80,000 pound truck will do to that road, to four-inch asphalt, how much dust is brought up. There's a lot of that information that is out there that is readily available and so keep digging. I mean, you guys have sent me a lot of stuff that has helped me understand and a lot of your, your testimony here has helped us understand. The hydrology up there, I had absolutely no idea how shallow some of those wells were up there. I mean, I live just down, just to the west of you guys and I've got a 440-foot well, but I had to have that much to get what I needed. So I understand that area and I understand what the, what the water situation is and how tentative it is and how sensitive it is on what goes on up there. So, but we do appreciate everything you guys have done and providing this and coming before us and talking to us. I'm a fan of citizen involvement. I mean, that's part of our, part of our right as citizens of this country is to be able to come before us and be able to express things. That does help us make decisions and I do really appreciate that. So that's, that's pretty much all I needed to say. I think everything else has been said. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Laird.
I've been a trial lawyer for over 50 years and I really think I'm an expert in understanding, presenting relevant evidence to convince juries and judges of certain positions. So let me share a couple of things with you. Number one, I called Mr. True after the last meeting and I wanted to talk to him about some unanswered questions that I had. One of the things is, is he got up and walked out before anybody spoke. Now I, in a way, I don't blame him for that. I did advise him that he could watch the whole thing on YouTube if he wanted to and he could hear, he could hear what you had to say. I would rather he'd seen the pain in some of your faces and, and the fact that you, most of you did compliment the True family and it isn't the whole True family that's involved here, by the way. I asked him if there was going to be blasting and he didn't know at this point. I asked him where this thing may be placed and he didn't know that either. He said, "There is a place up there," and I really didn't ask him where that was. He kind of told me, I think, but where he thought it could be placed where nobody would see it. So here's the relevant facts. Wyoming has wind and about 40 years ago, maybe 35 years ago, I represented a whole bunch of homeowners over in Wolf Creek because a guy had bladed down some ground behind them and didn't prepare the ground properly and the wind came up and the dirt blew in about 17 houses, went in so hard that it looked like it was snow piled up against their fences, they couldn't get out, pitted the back of their houses, pitted the windows, went into the attics. The attics broke down some of them and dropped the earth right into the kitchen. It blocked, it blew in all the locks where they couldn't even open their doors with the key and that included their cars, if their cars were outside. They got pitted, some of the doors wouldn't open and I made a claim for them and they were all compensated fairly, I believe, by the insurance company that was involved. So I had first-class knowledge of what that wind can do. If it gets a hold of that gravel up there on the side of your mountain, park your cars inside your garage and put up a big barrier so it doesn't wipe out one whole side of your house and your windows and everything else, because that, that's likely can happen. So I thought, I don't know much about gravel pits or how they built gravel pits. And as a lawyer, I present a lot of cases, but when it comes to scientific evidence, I go hire experts that know this and study this and understand this. So I called a guy that builds gravel pits and he, but it isn't in this jurisdiction. So I asked him, telling him about Coats Road, I says, "Let me tell you about the road." They got to go. There's a, it's a little bit of pavement on it and it's gravel road. And he says, "Well," he says, "here, we have to put in a paved road that can sustain 120,000 pound load." Because a truck that size, there won't be anything left of that gravel road, depending on how often they use it, within a week. Not even speaking of what the pavement may be. We couldn't, we could not go there. And I said, "Well, you, you have to get permits where you are." "Oh yeah, you have to get permits." And one of the things you have to do is encircle the whole operation with an acoustic berm. EAVI sent me the plans for the acoustic berm and the one that they built was big, their gravel pit was big. And the berm, the sides of it were 40 feet high and they planted grass on it and everything. He says, "These are built so that if you live two blocks away, you can't hear any of the mining operation." And that's a requirement of their law. And I said, "Well, what's going to happen up there?" He says, "Well, in 90 years, when we're done mining all that gravel, of course, I won't be around and he won't be around." He says, "But it'll be a nice lake for those people that are there." So I thought, "What?" He says, "Yeah, because when you start mining gravel, it's, you make a lot of money mining gravel. And here, you only have to pay the state 60 cents a ton and you sell it for around $20 a ton. And there's costs of removing it and all of that." So I said, "Well," he said, "it took us 15 years to get the permit with DEQ and to qualify for all of the things this jurisdiction requires to even start building this pit." He says, "These things don't go away." He says, "If it's a small pit, they keep, they keep mining, they expand the mine into from 15 acres to 500 acres to whatever they have a lease on. If there's cherry picking gravel off the top surfaces," which when I went up there and looked at this, there was a lot of that. "You only blast if you're going for bedrock and you only drill if you're going through bedrock." And I said, "Well, what about side of a mountain?" He said, "Well, we couldn't even do it on the side of the mountain because the blasting and the drilling and the removal will affect the water flow. So we can't do that here." And I said, "Really?" And he says, "Yeah, it sounds to me like in our jurisdiction, we wouldn't even be able to do that." Now, he's been in this business 30, 40 years and I, I was really interested in talking to him and, because what interested me the most, when I mentioned this to my wife, because I always ask her what I should do, you know, I don't want to get her irritated, and she says, "You better not let them build a gravel pit up there." I said, "Well, you know, you got to be fair to all the citizens, including Mr. True, and hear what they have to say and see what they're going to do because we have to follow the law here as well." So I said, "I got to find out about gravel pits." She says, "Well, you know, my dad is the one that builds these gravel pits." So it was her dad I called to ask him all these questions. And so I looked at a couple of videos. I got on YouTube and I typed in gravel pits and lawsuits. First thing that pops up was this lady that's in Michigan or Minnesota, I can't remember which, has a horse ranch, beautiful ground and all that and she's, she's almost saying the same thing you all are saying. And then they had the lawyer for the gravel pit company come on and they almost have the same law we do, except it's a little bit different. The conditional use permit can only be stopped if it's, if this gravel pit will cause very serious injury. And that's special language that the gravel pit companies got in through the legislature in that state. And this guy was really proud, this lawyer was really proud of pointing that out. He says, "Nobody can really prove that they're going to be very seriously injured." Because people are like you, they come in, they say what they believe could happen. And I know maybe you've gotten together and hired a mining lawyer, which I think is a good idea. I mentioned a hydrologist, you had a doctor here because personally, we'd like to hear scientific evidence. Now, I've said it, people ask me how I'm going to vote, I said, "I don't know, but I can tell you this, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want a gravel pit like this in my neighborhood and I don't think anybody else would. I don't think the Trues would like a gravel pit." And I don't think anybody else would. I don't think the Trues would like a gravel pit in their neighborhood either. Now, people have a right to make money in Wyoming. People have to follow the rules, follow the law and what have you. And we've, we've, we understand about the conditional use permit and the guidelines we have there. From what I see with that road up there, it can't sustain this kind of a mining operation. I, I wouldn't permit it just because of the road. Because I think it's dangerous. I drove my vehicle up there. When I got on the gravel road, I don't like being on those gravel roads. And I'm trying to imagine this truck dragging a pup behind it. This weighs 120,000 pounds. And I've had cases where these sized trucks have hit cars. Nobody in the car survives. Truck driver survives. The truck drivers are going to come down and they're going to, they're going to tear that road up if it isn't paved. And if I happen to be going up there, I'll be lucky to get out of there with only maybe $4,000, $5,000 of the damage on my car. And then the way that those tires, those big giant tires spit out gravel. And this is my, this is my father-in-law telling me this. He says, it, it'll spit out rock quarter of a mile away because it's powerful. Now, we've got a lot of houses along that road. And then the dust and the dirt and the wind that I've had experience with. I've lived here, you know, people say that I've lived here 40 years. I was born here. I raised, I was raised here. My kids were born here. My dad and mother were born here. My grandparents came here in 1900. I've got a grandfather up in the, in the cemetery that was born in 1850, my great-great-grandfather. So, we've been around a little while. And when I ran for office, I did it for one reason. To be fair and protectful to people in this county. I don't care if people make money. I just don't want them to make money on my dime and my problem and create problems for me. You put something in your neighborhood that affects your neighbors, you shouldn't put it there. We have, we have laws. We've, we've passed rules that say you can't, you can't have a, a rendering plant butchering animals next door to, to me over here on Poplar Street. You can't have a junkyard in the, in the, in Mike Cedar Park. There's a reason for that. Now, people go to the mountain. There's that MR1. That's a beautiful area up there. You got biking in that state land. Now, we have a little problem. The governor, I was really, I know him really well. And I was surprised, but I knew he was going to veto that bill. I knew he was going to do it. And he did do it. I called him on his personal phone. I never got a call back. I did ask, I will say this, when I called Mr. True, I think he's a gentleman, he's a very intelligent guy. I was, graduated with his father from high school. I graduated from high school with Peter Nicolason's dad. Known him since grade school and junior high. And they're good people. And, but they don't want to hurt anybody. Those kind of people don't want to hurt anybody. And this is going to, this, this, this could hurt people. And so, I've got to see where he wants to put this. I've got to see how he does it. I've got to see how you counteract the wind. I got to see what you're going to do with this road. I got to see what you're going to do with even stoplights. I don't know how you get one of those big trucks that get by people and get down there on the highway. But I, but I've checked it out. I've looked into it. And it can be a water problem. I don't know what the serious nature of it would be, but I know I've seen people who've called me over the years because somebody was digging up above them and it stopped all their water flow. And we had to go in and do something. Sometimes we had to get the courts involved to stop that. Now, we have to follow the law. And, and I'm going to do that. I'm going to follow the law. And Mr. Nicolason and the other commissioners, they're all going to follow the law as it applies. And I don't want to hurt people. I don't want to, I don't want to see them hurt. I want to see them live in their houses and be happy. I don't want their house to fill up with dirt. I don't want gravel to be spewed all over them. I don't want their water to be shut down. Now, got to prove these things. That's what's called relevant evidence. We can all say this could happen. Do we know it'll happen? Probably. But there are other experts who know. Jason, Jason knows a lot about hydrology and he, he thinks it's going to be a problem with the water. And I've seen problem with the water on the mountain because I've had people call me about it. So, I'm going to conclude by saying this. You don't have anything to fear from this county commission. They're going to treat you fairly. I believe that. And I appreciate you all coming out tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Millen. Are you there?
I am.
Go ahead.
Well, a lot of, what I was going to say has already been said, so we don't need to keep beating that portion of it. I do want to add my comments, however, on the gravel, proposed gravel pit. And while we have, our position is that we do have a seat at the table, I was rather disappointed with the governor's veto, which would have spelled out that the county had a seat at the table concerning gravel, this gravel quarry, any gravel quarry. With, as an example, though, with his no signature of Senate File 0009, he stated in his letter, ah, sorry, he stated in his letter of, of the no signature concerning locally elected school boards. Their members are duly elected by their community, basically, the local community. They're the fathers, the mothers, the neighbors, the friends of that community. And this local control should continue. He also followed up, saying he believed it is imperative that that control continue and it is most appropriate. He finalized by basically saying neuterize, neutering that authority would be detrimental. I wish he had as much faith with county board commissioners as he does with the local school boards. Apparently, he doesn't. And that's, that's troublesome for me. Yeah, I, I mean, especially for those communities, these counties that, we're not the only one. There's other counties out there that have zoning, have a conditional use permit process in place. After going through the process of developing this system, which is, is, you know, potentially, there's, there's criteria. After developing this process, it completely discounts that. And it was specified in that amendment that for those counties that have CUPs, they would have a seat at the table. But we don't. Not on that bill and not with his veto. He, in my mind, has no faith in us, no faith in the systems that we put in to handle a problem like this or issue. I'm not saying that we, we go down on one side or the other. But the lack of faith in our process is very troubling. So, I don't know why we even bother going through a process of trying to develop anything like that since the state legislature or the, or the governor can just basically reduce it at a wheel. That's about it. I'll see y'all in two weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you again. We are adjourned.